What to say on that except to say that everybody in the county wants their road paved. I don't think anybody wants to pay for it, but. The request that I'm getting both to pave roads and repave roads. And to bring roads into the system that are not in the county system. Used to be very polite. Folks are getting very aggressive now. You know, I've had it. This is ridiculous. Paved my road. That kind of thing. And, you know, I'll explain to them that we only have X number of dollars here. Uh, that we can use to pave and we've got five hundred and three miles of road that we have to maintain and. We've had a moratorium for probably twenty plus years against bringing new roads in because we uh. Have enough trouble maintaining what we've got. And I usually get something like, oh, well, yeah, I understand. Uh, I, that makes sense. I understand perfectly. But my road is different. We need, we need my road paved. Um, we put this out about three years ago and I am not one to try to bring something back when it's been rejected. I'm just frustrated because they rejected it at the polls, but they still want the roads paved. So. For myself, I'm okay with bringing it back again. I also note that. The way the law was written, if uh, if there's ever a push for a regional T-spots, then at that point it's too late. We cannot ask for a local T-spots. And I am, as much as I wish we could have a local T-spots, I am adamantly opposed to a regional T-spots. Because I just feel like we'd be shipping our dollars to the bigger counties. So. That's my take on it.
I've heard you reference many times the last time that the T-spots was on the ballot. And um, I've reminded you that it was, y'all made the decision to put it on there in two thousand nineteen, pre-COVID. And then. The election came after COVID had come out and that was very, in the early stages of it and. Uh, as an observer. T-spots just didn't get any attention. It was just something that was on the ballot. Everybody was worried about other things of historical proportions and. It might have passed had somebody, had there been able to make it. Better advertised or promote it.
David, I, I'm, I seem to recall this, but I'm not confident enough just to throw it out there, so I'm gonna ask you about it. Once we put the T-spots on the ballot, is there not a regulation that we cannot then advocate for it?
I think y'all can do uh, what I call be informative brochures and things of that nature, but it has to be championed typically by. Someone other than the board of commissioners. Now, I, I'll make certain of that. Uh, we sent y'all an email confirming that, but. Uh, typically that's the scenario of when there's a referendum of some sort that's being presented by the board. I mean, y'all can, you can hold the uh, sessions that we did last time and discuss the elements of it, what you would like to do with it, so that it's informative.
We could explain the need for it.
Yes, yes. Cause that was done last time. If you recall, there were many that were in attendance, were asking which roads and how soon and things of.
Yeah, but I thought that was done last time before we actually uh, put the uh, uh, res- resolution to.
I don't remember any of the timing on it.
I think it would. Ahead of that, cause we were still trying to make a decision at that point as to whether or not to go forward with it. This time it would be after the fact, so I just wanna make sure that we'd be good with it. I'll confirm.
Uh, Mr. Jerry, if I might.
Yep.
One of the things that uh, we were not able to do the last time that uh, T-spots was put on the ballot. Was to include in our joint comprehensive plan. Uh, what is called a transportation element. Uh, and because I sit on the stakeholders committee along with Andy and, and Jason, maybe and others. Uh, this year, uh, with uh, guiding the update of the joint comprehensive plan. I think uh, with conversations that I've had with Ethan Calhoun, with the uh, Regional Commission. I think we would be able to include a transportation element in the joint comprehensive plan. Which would then give you and the public a uh. Uh, an understanding, a better understanding of what our transportation needs or. I, I'm probably the only one along with Charlie that uh, when I took over. Uh, as Director of Public Works, the Road Department had been cut from thirty-two staff people to sixteen. And I have, Charlie I know has. Uh, during his tenure has sought to build that back and finally we're to a point. Uh, to where I think we can really make some headway with our transportation needs, but. Maybe what was lacking the last time and, and because of the precursor of COVID. Is a uh, a detailed plan of what we would intend to do. Over that five-year period with the T-spots revenue. Now, David, I don't, I don't think that in itself. Uh, would be disqualified to uh, the inclusion of the transportation element in the joint comprehensive plan. I don't think that would be uh, classified as an abication by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, for the T-spots, uh, but just for the necessary transportation improvements that are needed in the county.
Well, I think you need to go forward with that in, in the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan will be approved in October.
Right.
And if we go forward with this, the vote would be in November, so I guess that would be, you know, close enough. Uh, one thing too, and, and John, your, your comments were right on target. There's another consideration too in that. Back then, we weren't faced with the kind of pressures for. For the kind of growth that we're, we keep seeing coming at us now. I know, and, and the big problem we've got with that is infrastructure. We, I mean, we don't have the roads for. Most of what's being proposed and we, we just don't. I know that we uh, we're looking into impact fees and hopefully that's something that would be successful, but. The thing about impact fees is that uh, you get that money after the fact. We need to address infrastructure upfront. I, I think we've got to cart before the horse. And the T-spots would allow us to, to do something like that, so that's another consideration, I think, another difference between now and two thousand nineteen.
If I.
Go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead. Does I understand it? If this is on the ballot, you have to. List of roads. Regulating the route.
That's the project, yeah.
Uh, you said something that bothers me a little bit there when you said, talking about bringing roads into the county. You're not thinking along those lines with this, are you? The reason I, the only good and such reason I ask that. We've got more we can do now with what we have and we'll have more that we can get done if this were to pass to maintain what we now have. So, I will make sure we're.
Well, I, I think that at some point, there are some roads that we're gonna have to start thinking about bringing in. Not necessarily right away. We absolutely can do that unless we have something like this, but with something like this, maybe somewhere down the road, we could. I get, I get calls every day from folks about wanting to bring their roads in and most of the. Most of the time, you know, I'm good with just saying, no, I don't think so. Uh, and people exaggerate, you know, you can't, you couldn't, you gotta have Fort Wiltshire to get down to my road, but an ambulance couldn't get there. And I go out and look and it's really not that bad. Sometimes I go out and look and I have to agree with these folks. I don't, I don't say, get a tank down this road. You know, and I'll, and I'll get calls where we've got a, a cancer guy here, we've got a guy with heart problems, you know, that needs ambulance service all the time. I think there's a few roads that at some point we're gonna have to start thinking about bringing in, but. I'm not advocating that we do that initially and, or that that be the primary point of this. Uh, but it would allow us to bring in a few select roads down the roads somewhere.
Are you talking about including on the list, roads to be brought into the county?
No.
Okay, then that's, that's not an issue for this. For the T-spots.
Well, the T-spots. Would only be a portion, I mean, we would still be uh, budgeting money for roads over a boat T-spots.
But the T-spots would not be used for.
T-spots would be not, would not be used for bringing roads in.
Okay, it's only clear on that.
Okay.
I'd like to ask a question that will put Sandy on the spot. Help me to understand, um, this being additional penning tax. Does that go, what is exempt from that? Like food and prescriptions and then? Help me understand that part of that.
Those are the only things I'm aware of that would be exempt from it unless the motor fuel.
The motor fuel is exempt.
Yes, motor fuel is.
Food, prescription.
I don't think food is though.
Food is not.
No. I thought originally that food was puberty and I was gonna cover that, but it is not.
It's not. I know it's only taxed at three percent, but.
Okay, here's a list of what would be exempt. Sell or use of any type of fuel used for off-road heavy duty equipment, off-road farm, agricultural equipment or locomotives. The sale or use of jet fuel toured by a qualifying airline and a qualifying airport would be us. The sale or use of fuel that is used for propulsion of motor vehicles on the public highways. The sale or use of energy used in the manufacturing or processing of tangible goods primarily for resale. The sale or use of motor fuel as defined under the code section. And the purchase or lease of any motor vehicle. So, uh, people, um, that was one of the big things last time. People thought we would be raising the amount of sales tax they would have to pay when they bought a car. But you're not actually paying sales tax anymore and, but everybody still thinks I have a sales tax, but it, it's not sales tax, so this doesn't affect that.
But you, prescriptions, are prescriptions still exempted or not?
They're not listed as exempt on here.
I thought they were at some, at one point, but maybe they've changed, I guess they've changed that probably.
Well, wait a minute. In, in reading this a little more closely, maybe they are. It says. Items that are exempted, regular spots exemptions apply, plus these six items. So if prescriptions are exempted from spots, then they would also be exempted from T-spots.
I believe they are.
And food? Well, I read somewhere that food was not exempted, but I don't have that here, so I, I.
It's exempted for spots, isn't it?
I believe.
If it's exempted from spots, then according to this, it would be exempted from T-spots.
Cause food is at three percent.
But I think food, I think that exemption is for certain categories of food, not just all foods.
Not like if you go to a restaurant, you pay seven percent.
I mean, even at a grocery store though, I think there's certain categories that are three percent and others that are seven percent.
Seven percent, that's right.
Yeah.
With my fresh food, canned, canned food is not taxed for spots? Question mark.
Correct. I believe those would be at three percent. It's like Charlie said, there's categories that are, some are at three percent, some are.
And that three all goes to the state?
Yes.
And I don't think people understood that last time, all those exemptions.
The only other question I have is what uh, David's son is on the. House Bill five eighty-one and what, how that might impact our decision.
Well, let David address that here shortly.
John, I have a question for you. Well, all three of y'all may know this. I had reached out to Jennifer on Friday, but I haven't gotten a response yet. Have we seen a sales tax study on how much of our sales tax comes in for a single region?
I have seen one in the past. I don't have current.
Well, that's.
So my habits.
I hadn't said the recent one. I didn't know if there was.
I have not seen one lately, but I also have that far as to.
One of the questions that I had, uh, Charlie about the T-spots is, are the two cities. Are the two cities included in the T-sp- re- potential revenue that?
Yes.
Okay, so then you would take out. What they would be eligible for. And then that would give you a number as to.
Correct.
What you would expect to be able to appropriate to transportation.
Correct, and they would have the same limitations with the money they get and using it for transportation only.
But, but I still believe that that, uh, again, I'm thinking about the joint comprehensive plan. Uh, there's no doubt that if the cities don't do something about their transportation system. I mean, we already have grid life. I mean, it's gonna be major grid life. And what I would hope that the two cities would join in. Uh, to uh, make, you know, the plan for the T-spots. All inclusive, you know, not just the county.
And I'm confident that they will, but if I understand this correctly, and if not, David can correct me. We can do this without the cities. We just couldn't uh, do one percent. We'd have to do point seven five.
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't think there needs to be discussion as to whether the cities going to.
Oh, I'm confident the cities.
I think at this point in time, but we're preliminary Jim, so. And I, I, I think based upon previous uh, spots to referendum, a T-spots to that, I think the cities will willingly participate.
And, and I have had a conversation with one of the mayors on this and, and that is the case, that they will be participating in. I'm confident. That it will be the same. But let's go ahead, whatever we need to get into the comprehensive plan, let's get it in there.
Now, the comprehensive plan, is it gonna spell out the projects that y'all developed from there or is it just gonna be more of a generic?
I would think comprehensive plan would be more generic, but Jim, you.
Well. You know, I, we, we actually made this week. Uh, and uh, I've had the conversation with Ethan Calhoun. But in the preparation for the previous uh, T-spots. We actually identified for you, Charlie, or, or for the commission at that time. How the funds would be spent during that five-year period, so. I think it's gonna be a combination of both, but I believe that the, the inclusion of the. Transportation element in the comprehensive plan will lend more justification for the request. Of the uh, T-spots being on the ballot.
I, I think you're right, but I believe that could be more generic. We don't need to put in the details into that.
With our great um, number of visitors, they would be paid, I wish we knew, I wish we could.
I, I can give you some idea on that, but it's nowhere near current. It's probably ten years old. But there was a document, I believe it was from the Department of Revenue, but it was from the State Department uh. Back in uh, two thousand fifteen. Uh, concerning spots, not, not specifically T-spots, but spots. And uh, and I don't remember the exact figures, but the percent, and it, and it indicated how much. Of the spots revenue that was collected county by county, uh, was local versus um, visitors, passengers. I have no idea how they determined that information, but this was the report. And it was mid to high seventy percentage for Gilmore County and Spots in two thousand.
And that's only increased exponentially since.
Uh, they, I wouldn't wanna put a uh, an actual figure to it today without trying to find a more updated uh, version of that, but. I would feel extremely confident in saying that the vast majority of this would be paid for by visitors.
There was a, a study done in two thousand nineteen by the Chamber and I don't remember the numbers, but it was, again, I was pre-COVID, so. I'm sure the Chamber can give us something. They have access to that pretty quick.
Well, you know, they can find the, the new version of that same report, so.
David, you were involved with the, with Ryan a while ago, but does it still, House Bill five eighty-one impact what we're talking about?
Well. That bill is gonna deal with the statewide floating homestead exemption. Uh, and I, I had some very preliminary discussions with Teresa Gooch on that last week. Um, as y'all are aware, there already is a homestead exemption, uh, actually a larger homestead exemption for the citizens. Uh, and then there is that senior school tax exemption as well. Uh, so I, I, I think, and you know, of course, we'll have to look at it from the perspective of how it applies, but let's, let's suspect. That the state voters do in fact approve that, which is probable, most likely, to be honest with you. It would be probably, and I, I don't want this, I, I, it's unknown, let me say it that way, Andy. It's unknown as to whether or not that would be advantageous to Gilmore County property owners that are homestead. I think what happens applies to the, the home, the floating exemption and look at it compared to the, the exemption that was passed. I believe back in two thousand five, I believe. I think on the face, the county, those that are eligible for a homestead exemption are not going to want this floating exemption. I don't think it's gonna be beneficial. I think it actually is gonna be uh, detrimental. And in that scenario. The local government, once that referendum passes, has an opt-out provision, which has to occur before March the first, twenty twenty-five. Um, and then there's some follow-ups and if, if you don't opt out. Uh, they're eligible for an additional local option sales tax. Um, the dynamics of everything with that bill, with how Gilmore County homestead properties are, are situated. Um, it's got to be looked at a little bit closer. And again, I just got this information from Teresa last week and I'm not in a position to, to give you an up or down on that.
But the local option sales tax, the additional local option sales tax that that would make us eligible for. Uh, as I recall, could only be used to offset property taxes as in.
Correct. It's, it's, it's a direct, a dollar for dollar reduction of the millage rate. Yes.
Same, which we really kinda already have with the lost.
Uh, you, you have it with your loss, but again.
This would be an additional though that visitors could have paid.
It would result in a millage rate decrease, but the question is, is would the resulting loss in the uh.
Would it be worth it in terms of the uh.
There's a lot of interplay here and I, I can't say today where that interplay is gonna lead you to as far as your decision to. Properly debate it and then decide whether or not you want to opt out or not.
I, I was talking about the thing about just the local sales tax portion.
Yes.
David, if, if that were the case, then if, if that House Bill passes, then it would.
The House Bill, the House Bill has passed. It's whether or not the voters elect to.
Yeah, it's got going, it's gotta be voted.
It's on the ballot, yeah.
But that would affect those communities that already have the T-spots as well.
No, there, there's no connection between this House Bill and T-spots.
Okay, so what, what is the, what are we discussing?
The, I think the interchange or interplay is, is that. If you, if, if, if you don't opt out of that statewide floating homestead exemption, you're eligible for that additional local option sales tax. The question is, is, does the county opt out or does the county elect to proceed with that statewide floating homestead exemption? And I don't know, and I, I need the Board of Assessors to give us an opinion on. And specifically, probably Teresa, cause they're over in Caveat right now. They're learning about this in Athens. Is that statewide floating homestead exemption going to be more beneficial to the citizens, the homesteaded properties of Gilmore County? Than the, the current homestead exemption? I remember the current homestead exemption is ten acres, I believe, up to ten acres. And it's a fixed, it's not a floating value. It was fixed when you purchased the property. So I understand if, for example, if I bought, or if John Doe bought property back in two thousand and five. For two hundred thousand dollars and it was homesteaded in two thousand and six. The portion of property that uh, is eligible for the homestead exemption is fixed as far as the assessed value is concerned. Now, actually, not as far as the assessed value. The assessed value continues to go up, but it's a fixed dollar amount or fixed value under here upon which the millage rate is applied. It's a very complicated uh, formula, uh, and there, there's two of them that work. There's the, the county, the. That one and the senior school tax exemption. The senior schools tax exemption has unlimited acres if I'm not mistaken. Uh, so I think that those are things that, that just again, y'all need to be mindful of and probably need to be looking at as well.
But five eighty-one does not really impact what we're talking about?
It does not. It does not. However, the way I read this is uh, if you do not out, opt out of that statewide floating, then you're eligible for a, an additional local option sales tax. To me, that tells me that there's an additional penny that's about it.
Did they specifically say you could go to nine percent?
Correct. So if you have T-sp- you see what I'm saying? I, that's the interchange there.
Well, but David, I uh. Your, your theory is correct. You know, it, it's a theory right now.
It, it's a guess. It's not a theory.
Okay. Uh, then the local option sales tax can be utilized for a variety of things. But the T-spots can only be used for transportation improvements, which in my mind. Would be assurance to the voters that hey, that, that is where this money is gonna go.
But Jim, the local option sales tax could not be used for a number of things. It can only be used to directly reduce the uh, amount of property tax.
Yeah, it's, it's a direct reduction.
But that includes the entire funding of the county government almost, right?
Pretty much, yeah.
T-spots can only be used for transportation.
Right.
I, I, I'm not saying that I'm advocating one way or the other. Actually, I'd be, I'll be honest with you. I'd advocate for a T-spots. I'm not a part of the board here, so I can say that. I believe it. I think that's what your opinion is on it as well. However, I just, the, the board needs to know, we may need to extrapolate some information quickly from, from the Board of Assessors just to kinda get an idea as to what the interplay is here.
But in terms of that bill, what we would wanna do would be to look at both sides of it and figure out which one would be most advantageous to the property owners here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's not that we're trying to increase revenue or anything.
No, no, the, the, the whole key is gonna come down to whether or not the Board wishes to opt out. I, again, my, my hunch is, this is that that statewide floating homestead exemption will pass.
We just have to determine which side is supposed to advantageous.
Yes.
I had conversations with um. Some of the commissioners from London County when we were in, at the ACCG conference and they were, they have done this and they were extraordinarily happy. It raised lots of money and they, they recognized that it was. Visitors that were paying the vast majority of it and I understand Murray County has one. Uh, Raven County had it, Rockton, Raven has one. Um, so there's several that around us had it already and are enjoying the benefits of it.
Well, the, the topic came up at one of the Regional Commission meetings, um, where there were a number of people that had it and did not have it. And all those that had it, uh, seemed to believe that it was uh, something that was working remarkably well for them. seemed to believe that it was, uh, something that was working remarkably well for them, so.
And it is on the ballot in Dawson County, and I think there'll be, it's on there for tomorrow. And of course Lumpkin County has passed it, um. Uh, and we all know that the roads are heavily traveled, no, no, it's by out, it's out of county, uh, visitors. They either out of state or within the state of Georgia, but they're out of county.
Well, there's one other item that I'd kinda like to throw in here. Not related to T-Splosts, but related to taxes. Um, I guess it's probably been, I don't know, two, three months ago now, but I sent all y'all a link to a state study that ranked the, uh, property taxes for all hundred and fifty-nine counties from the highest to the lowest, y'all remember that?
Yes.
And Gilmer County was the fifth lowest of the hundred and fifty-nine counties.
I don't think that the speech worked, like, the third?
I thought it was fifth.
Looks like.
Anyway, it was either third, fourth, or fifth lowest of the hundred and fifty-nine counties, and, and.
We have it.
And I do still have a copy of it, so we can verify which, but. And Andy does, too, I sent him that, so. Um. So it's not, you know, all I ever hear is you're taxing us to death, you're taxing us to death. But the fact of the matter is, we're either the third, fourth, or fifth lowest of the hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state. So. Unfortunately, our neighboring county is lower, so that makes us look bad.
We don't have to talk about that.
Well, they don't have all the good stuff we got, that's for, so. Anyway, um. I, I just wanted to kinda get that out there, because I, I do hear all the time that all you, all you wanna is more money and you're taxing us to death. Um, I'm probably gonna start advertising that particular study a little more heavily. So, anything else that we need to talk about on T-Splosts?
What are the expenses?
If, if y'all would like to proceed, you'd have to adopt a, uh, resolution today, uh, commencing, starting this. And from there, then, then the notices could be issued and sent to the city. Uh, and then have to compile your project list and make certain that y'all are all comfortable with it. Like, with that project list, it can change, we'll put some language within there, within the body of it, I think I shared with you, we've got some county, what they did as far as that, and we're, most likely, and then make that. Cause of course, during the course of five years, things can change, and, uh, but it just gives the, the voter guidance as to what is on that list. And, and, but there is a disclaimer that not everything will be paid or been approved, and things may, may be adjusted as, as conditions require.
But if we put a road on there as having, as gonna be paved with this, and then sometime during that five years that this is in play, that road, we, we decide that road doesn't get paved, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a bad situation.
Right, and I think probably the, the element that would probably require y'all not to re, not be eligible to repave it, that would be costs, so it'd have to, have to factor that in, and a bridge, the bridge catastrophe, that's probably where you're gonna get the.
Well, and that's something we haven't talked about on here yet, but bridges are included in this, and we're about to face some seriously heavy expenditures on some of these bridges. And that's another part of the infrastructure that we got to improve as well.
Yes, and it needs to be on the list for certain, but that, that's a list that Ryan needs to develop, and then y'all can look at it.
Bridges are not very sexy.
No.
So.
They are very expensive, though.
Yeah, but I. Remember, remember, I was thinking of that.
They're sexy if you take.
You're wrong.
They're sexy if you take your cross.
Right, but, uh, you, you, I think y'all see what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
So what, what we're really talking about, House Bill five eighty-one, does it really impact what we're thinking about doing today?
Not today, not today, but when we get into November, and we see the results of the statewide referendum on that, then y'all will have to look at the interplay between the two, cause I don't know if you wanna go to a ten, that, visit. It'd be up to nine.
But you're talking about, when you say look at the interplay between the two, you're talking about in terms of what the maximum sales tax rate may be, I mean, one doesn't directly affect the other.
Correct, it's correct.
Would somebody remind me, please, you confused me.
Sorry.
Because we're acting at nine percent.
Well, it would be if this passed.
Right. But then you said something about.
I, 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 my number that I extracted was ten, and that's incorrect, it currently we're at seven percent. If this T-Spot were to pass, assuming y'all go ask for a full penny to be collected, it'd be at eight percent. Then if House Bill, this one here passes, then, then y'all opt out, and you're eligible for that loss, and that would be another four percent.
Obviously, we're eight, we're seven. We're seven, and, and eight, I believe, man, it's the limitation.
Correct.
That, that, House Bill will change that if we don't.
That's correct.
All right, so.
Would somebody remind me about, are there on two sunsets in a T-Spot of, of monetary, of twenty-seven a day sunset?
There's only a day sunset now, the legislation that was passed this year did away with the monetary sunset, David, make sure I'm right.
I am pretty sure, Charlie.
In fact, I think that's in here.
In the legislature.
So it would be a five-year regardless of how much money we raise, good or bad.
But remember, you're gonna be getting, collecting estimates of cost on the days, prices, and you're gonna be chasing that, to be honest with you, inflation and cost channels, which is increasing.
We only have one sunshine.
I can find it real quick here, but yeah, there's just one sunset, and that, that was one of the changes that were made in this current legislative session.
Again, the resolution being proposed is one to place it on the ballot for the citizens to vote on.
Correct, that's correct, the citizens would be the ones making the decision.
Correct.
Was there any other discussion, I mean?
I'm willing to make the motion that we, for all the reasons we've already discussed, um, would you guys make that, towards that?
Uh, just to commence the, uh, process to establish it and place it on the, uh, ballot for November.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're coming back to the, uh, bed.